Call the meeting. Please join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
We have proposed amendment to the minutes. Remember, we put the wish even that was away for February 1st meeting. You know, the proposed change in red. There's one. Right here and then the major one is next to last two. We have a motion. I move the ATRF that changes as submitted. Accepted. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Any opposed? And. As a separate vote, approval. Could we have a motion on the approval for the warrants?
I move the accepted warrants as presented.
Accepted. Any discussion? All in favor? The next select board meeting will be Thursday, March 7th, 2024, at 5:30 PM here at the town hall. I will not be here. I'm proposing that we move business item five to business item one so that Amber may not be forced to stay here. The rest of the discussion, you are invited.
Seriously, can you?
You are invited to stay.
Of course.
However, sometimes people have other things that.
I'm just here if there's any questions or.
Yes, thank you. So we've had this for a couple of days. Is there any discussion that, or yes, we officially need a motion. So I move that we accept the tower lease amendments.
I actually have a.
Could we have a second?
My second.
Okay, open for discussion.
So I. I'd like to see us add in a revenue share should they sell access to the tower to business entities. Now I know that based upon changing the height, which happened at the board meeting, the planning board meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
The prior contract eliminated that option because it was set at the height that you couldn't, you could only have emergency services on it.
Yes.
And by bringing that height down, that actually removes that stipulation.
Right.
And in theory, now you can sell tower rights on the tower. And I think that town should share a small portion of that as a revenue stream, should you choose to do that.
We originally did not plan to do anything but put public safety entities on that tower, and that was my understanding until very recently. We, they, there absolutely should be amendment to your contract should we decide to put cell carriers on that tower.
Any remove, other than emergency.
Right, and, and that was not the original intention of that tower.
And I don't believe it to be. And they, and they, the discussion that happened at the planning board was because you're using 115 feet and above for emergency, it's highly unlikely that a business is going to want to go below that. So in theory, it's a moot point. However, I'd like to protect the town.
Absolutely.
Should you choose to make that a revenue opportunity, it makes sense for us to share in it.
Yeah, absolutely. I would, I would welcome a conversation on that because there are different ways to look at how to do, to propose revenue sharing. And we've recently taken a look at that. We're working through some of that language with our attorney on a different person, so.
Well, just by changing the height, that actually opens it up. It frees it up for, and you and I may not be here when that happens down the road.
I, I don't, it's not, it's not, it's not a top priority. Public safety is their priority. And you know, I don't even think we're already looking at putting cell carriers on there for several years. I, they did a brief market study. There isn't a lot of call for it. That area is fairly covered in terms of cell coverage. So we don't foresee it becoming something that absolutely there should be an identity.
Then.
I would be opposed to the town charging the county for tower. Our own fire chief, as well as other towns in the area, has all said there are dead spots around the different communications. And this tower is going to greatly improve the communication between second dispatch, West Bath, whether it's Project Fitzburg or whatever. As a matter of public safety, I believe the town should let the county put the tower off. If they so choose to sell something space later on, the county benefits, so we all benefit tax-wise. But this is not, I don't see it as a money maker for the town. I see it as a emergency public service for the town, and I'm glad the county is doing it. If it helps one person in West Bath over 10 years, it's well worth it. And it should not be looked at as a money maker for the town. I leave the county without asking for, or the town asking for it, propose giving us $20,000 in the first place. And I think that's more than sufficient. And I welcome the combination, combination tower to the town. It'll enhance our public service and public safety.
This isn't, this isn't.
Excuse me? I would like somebody else to have a chance, including myself.
Sure, of course. I didn't know you were going to talk.
My position has been that it is not helpful to public safety or to the town to try to turn an emergency communications tower into a money-making facility. And I don't see any reason why the town of West Bath would not want the, if, in, if in the case that eventually the tower space is sold, I don't see why that would not be to our benefit as well as other communities in our county to have that as a source of revenue. And that helps all of us with our county taxes. And we are one of the high payers, I understand, of county expenses. So why not help ourselves to save our expenses? Amber?
I just wanted to point out that the intention of any revenue is to go back into public safety. And we, yeah, so.
It's not going to be a money maker as such.
Yeah. My, my personal feeling is I think it's unlikely that we will get cell carriers. But in the event of getting cell carriers, that, we, we did discuss what would happen with that revenue and it would go directly back into public safety for the county.
Mike?
Having done the personal property taxes on cell towers for multiple years, you'd be surprised at how many get tagged on and tagged on and tagged on. What started out with one company up there has got five different vendors hanging their antenna up it. Things change.
And that would be a little bit to public safety if that were the case.
May I speak now?
It doesn't.
Yes, thank you. So this is not to charge Saginaw County to put their emergency services on a tower. This is to, to charge supplemental contracts should they happen. Highly unlikely, since I was told last night, or Tuesday night, it would be under 115 feet. So the distribution of that signal is lessened. However, as Mr. Hennessy stated, there is a significant revenue stream. And we're not talking about today, and we don't, you know, the longevity of this contract. It's, I think the town, and we have determined, and Amber certainly is aware of it as a request, she's looking at it for another provider as well. And so it's not an unheard of request to have that. And we're not saying that we're going to go 50/50. I would like to consider this as an option for the town since we are giving them the tower.
Kathy, do you have a comment?
Really? I think all the money is going to go in the Saginaw County debt anyways, no matter how we do this, because we need, it's only going to help our taxes. Your taxes. I mean, any money we make off that tower, if we make any, which I really don't think will make that much, will go back to reduce the taxpayers' burden anyways.
That is true. And I'm, I want to agree with both of you because just to the point of the gentleman buying, there's only, there will only be a maximum of two carriers ever. So that tower can hold more than two carriers. So the maximum we could possibly have is two. And we, we did play around with the math to, to just see what would happen moving forward. And it goes a long way towards paying our, our other lease fees on other towers, which also isn't, and we're also including more towers in our new configuration. So our, the cost of maintaining this radio tower communications is going up significantly to us. So that's the intent, it's the only reason we wanted to put cell carriers on it is to help it go back. However, to your point, it does actually make sense for you to put something in there where you can at least renegotiate at that time.
I just want to protect the town.
I appreciate the sentiment on, on the whole test. It's just, it won't be, and, and we, and I'm sure the commissioners would agree to, to signing a provision that allows the town to renegotiate that piece should it arise.
Mike?
The simple step right now is to move it along by simply putting an addendum that says in the future, some vendors mounting on that power will be separately negotiated and move on now.
So we want to defeat, go on this and defeat it. And then we. Hold phrase. If.
Can it, I guess I have a question. Can it be, can we accept it with the expectation of an addenda coming up following this as an added to this? Because I don't want to get in the way of building out the tower because I do believe it's important.
Sure.
But I'd like to find a way to, to do that and, and allow us also to have an addendum accepted.
Yeah.
Yes.
The goal of tonight's meeting is to accept language and schedule a special town meeting. So I think if you make a motion to put forth the lease agreement and the First Amendment to the solar lease, put it forward to public meeting as amended.
Right.
And how long would it take to, to add the language from your end?
I don't think it would take long. I really don't. I think that I'm happy to put our attorney and have him draft an, a provision then for you to review at your next meeting.
Okay. I don't even think we need to wait until the next meeting.
I don't either.
Okay.
If we, if we have.
I, I think we need to, or it would make sense for us to expedite as, as much as we can.
I move that we accept the contract as presented under the provision that the addendum for future revenue sharing will be added and accepted at that time.
Well, I think we need to specify what the, the addendum is.
We had a post and second on the first one, so we don't.
We can amend.
You should vote on the first one first. You can't vote to approve something as presented with amendments.
Right. So then we can vote to defeat this one and then move to accept this with the addendum for approval provided that. So let's defeat this one first. All in favor of defeating? And what's the, all in favor of defeating?
No, all in favor.
In base of the motion.
All in favor of the motion. Vote yes is not what we want to do. All opposed? Okay. So now we need to approve Saginaw Communications Tower lease and amendments to new Meadow Solar LLC lease reviewing agreements. Let's see.
Well, before the solar lease, you need to. Come on this contract.
Oh, vote on the contract. Okay. All right. So I move that we accept the submittal of a new contract with an amendment to accommodate a future revenue sharing. That's not clear enough. We need to. We need to. We need to accept the lease as presented with the amendment. Will that work?
Comment.
Comment with an amendment. To address, to provide for renegotiation in the event that the tower is leased to non-Saginaw entities.
I would say non-emergency because I think Brunswick is potentially a 911.
Thank you.
So I think it should, it should say, it should say emergency services. Because we've opened it up to Brunswick.
Carly, what does?
So we accept lease as presented with amendment to provide for renegotiation event tower is leased to non-emergency services.
Okay, yeah, that works. That works. Mike?
Suggestion.
Can we get a second?
Yeah, wait, second. Second, second. Okay, thank you.
No, you're getting a two-parted, simply state Saginaw County. If part of Saginaw wants to put the thing out, then yeah, that's fine.
If the registrar of deeds wants to, wants to put something on the cell tower, we won't try to.
If I was breaking your contract, I would tell you, I live in Saginaw County, so I can put it out for free because that's what you said, literally. It needs to be the government, not, not simply Saginaw County entity.
With these emergency services. Emergency services. Because Brunswick is part of it.
Who has changed?
Okay, here's my ambulance. Here's my record service. I told you I could be dirty.
I, for, you would consider that emergency services?
You don't have to if you say Saginaw County. That's why I'm saying do it that way.
Or how about county emergency services?
How about as presented by their attorney?
Okay.
And Mark Bauer. Yes, and Mark Bauer.
Or Lee's.
Our attorney will be involved.
Just revenue generating.
We should be warning, it should be worded by the attorneys anyway, so.
But would it be county?
Like a renegotiation as presented by the attorney? We, Brunswick actually helps Saginaw County. Because by adding the Brunswick one, we're actually in offense the services that we are able to provide to the county.
Would something like Saginaw County and other government agencies or provides with whom we have mutual aid agreements?
Or just take that all out and say move to accept as presented with amendment to provide for renegotiation, period.
For future revenue services.
I would just put it as for renegotiation.
Right, and then when we get it back from the attorneys, it'll be clearer and.
Right, you're right, Kathy. The reality is, is that Bernstein, Scher, and Jensen, they're going to come up with the.
Building a word.
Language, so I don't think we have to.
But it's really, it's really only for revenue services. It's not, that's the only component that we're trying to share in. We're not trying to.
But we, we don't have to figure it out. We shouldn't be trying to figure it out.
But I think that's a safe revenue in that scenario. It doesn't talk about revenue strategy, just talk about renegotiation.
We can convey our.
Right.
Our desires to our mutual attorneys and they will figure this out.
I'm sure Amber's going to tell them while we talk.
I will, and I'm starting a little bit to figure out how you word this.
I think if you just let your attorney know.
Yeah.
What they're after, they'll craft the language.
The good thing is that here is that we really are trying to partner for this.
But Brunswick is part of it, so I don't want to say Saginaw County.
Right, I, yeah.
Well, something about the agencies with which we have mutual aid agreements anywhere in the county. I mean, because.
You could just say in the event that commercial entities are placed on the tower or.
Yeah, so let's leave it at this. And we, in, as part of the discussion with the attorneys, you'll take the discussion for us in short and we'll take ours to power. Then we can get. And clearly, if we don't like what comes back, then, then we have, and the town meeting actually will have opportunity to propose amendments as well. It's not a take it or leave it situation. Well, Suzanne's the one that proposed the motion, so she needs to be okay with what it says.
Can you read what you have?
So right now I have moved to accept the lease as presented with amendments to provide for a renegotiation.
I would say on, on revenue generating initiatives because we're not trying to negotiate anything.
Anything else of the content.
That's what I, I don't want, I think we're.
I think my attorney would appreciate it if we could consolidate that too.
I would say future revenue generating services. And that way all emergency services are encompassed as it presented.
That, that works.
It's simple.
Okay, so there's the motion. And we have a second. We have a second. Okay, is there a further discussion? All in favor of the motion as read? Any opposed?
Okay, we need a couple more motions. We need a motion on the First Amendment to solar lease between the town of West Bath and Meadow Solar LLC.
Exhibit two? Pardon? Exhibit two?
Yeah, but it has a separate heading. It's Saginaw County.
It's after, it's after exhibit two.
First one, it's always. That's, all right, got it. Tell me what the amendment is.
The purpose of the amendment is to establish the tower falls on and the access point. And then there's a depiction on the final page.
And this is going to be to. Good solar people?
Yes, this amends the solar lease between the town and Meadow Solar.
And this is acceptable to the county?
Yes, we're seeing the amendments and we've agreed.
And you all have agreed on this, yeah?
Yes, there's also a space where the county to sign off on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion to accept the First Amendment to the solar lease as presented.
I move that we accept the First Amendment to the solar lease as presented.
And the second? Is there further discussion? Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Excellent.
Okay, one more motion.
All right.
To schedule a special town meeting to vote on those two agreements. I would propose that you conduct the special town meeting on March 7th.
I'm not here.
I understand that. I'm concerned about holding it up any longer than it needs to. The planning board already gave conditional approval for the project pending the town meeting vote. And actually, there was an incident yesterday that didn't go very well because there was a communication breakdown. And the outcome could have been very different if communication was where it needs to be. My understanding is even if they start, they get approval and they start with their plans right away to erect the tower and put the equipment on it, it's 12 weeks out from that point, so.
Well, can we do it earlier in that, can you do it the fourth or fifth? I, I leave on the sixth for a trip for, for work.
Yeah, there's an election on the fourth.
And I, yeah, and I can't.
And it's a town vote.
Yeah, it's a town vote. The select order already took action and saw appropriate. So it's really just putting the questions forward to the town.
So it would really be the solar lease people being there and Amber to answer questions?
Yeah, everybody would be there to answer questions, I would hope.
Okay, can we not do it on the fifth? Does it, I mean, does it have to be on a Thursday?
It doesn't have to be on a Thursday.
There's an election on March 7th.
Oh, the fourth then? We used to have our meetings on Mondays.
The election on the fourth, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into setting up an election.
And frankly, we're trying to reduce the number of meetings that, you know, that we have. But actually, a lot of meetings.
What time on March 7th?
Pardon me?
What time of day?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would be 5:30 or 6:00 at the latest.
We often have town meetings at six.
Okay. And this would be at the fire hall to be clear, right?
Right.
Because the fire hall would be around the four. We have a bunch of events we can meet in a day, but it's at, it'll be four.
I move that we go ahead on the seventh in order to facilitate the construction of this tower.
Second, that motion?
Further discussion? I'd like to free a little bit so I can participate. Whether it's on a Monday or a Thursday.
Are you opposed to any of it?
I'd like to be part of it. I'd like to hear it, you know, this is a discussion. I'm not opposed to any of it, but I'd like to hear what the community thinks also. We don't know what they think.
No.
I mean, having a town meeting, we should all be there.
Stream it. Is there any way to? What's that?
Is there any way to stream it and make Suzanne part of it?
No, we're really not equipped to do that.
I think personally, I think that the importance of the tower outweighs the need for any one of us to be present.
Moving it up actually makes it a better decision. We're expediting even more so.
We can't have it on the fourth of the fifth, at the fire hall.
Further discussion? All in favor on the eighth amendment?
I'm not here.
No, that's a Friday.
Yes.
Get that long day long meeting.
What about the 29th?
I can.
Which is the week before.
Does that give us sufficient notification?
Yeah, we only need seven days notice.
Yeah, but that's seven days from the day that the attorney has it all buttoned up.
Right.
Jay?
You know, let's just move on with it. I'm sorry, Suzanne, you can't come because you're working. Everybody else has got a schedule we're trying to work around, and it's not working out. Let's just do it as stated.
Any other comments on the public, on this? Okay, then I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the meeting on March 7th at 6 o'clock at the fire hall? All in favor of the meeting on March 7th at 6 o'clock at the Fire Hall? Vote aye, raise your hand. All opposed?
Thank you.
Hey, Amber, I'll wait for your...
Yeah, absolutely. We, in Texas, it's a great day.
Okay, that takes care of Alright. Back to business, item number one, which is no longer number one, Freedom of Access Act. There's a proposed policy on the table. Further discussion? Is merited at this point before we accept it? Any thoughts?
So what are the fees? Allow all?
Those are laid out in statute. I will have them at my fingertips. There's fees, there's prolonged compilation time, which is very rare to like, get all the documents together. And then there's copying fees.
So they're, as I recall, fairly reasonable?
Yeah.
comparable to what you...
The local library, yeah, like 10 cents a page sort of thing.
Right, I think it was amended this past legislature because it wasn't up to what local libraries are charging.
Well, I think it was higher and it was brought down.
So this is intended to make requests clearer to both the requister and the person who is filling the request. Is there one that's reasonable to me? Reasonable to me to us? This, as I recall, we drafted this based on other towns' requests.
Right, Old Orchard Beach. That's the line we've got. Old Orchard Beach uses it directly from the statute, so it doesn't really have any fluff to it, other than to name who the officer is and the point of contact. And the form is just a vehicle to get those requests. It's not required, as Bo states that we cannot require it, but some people like having a starting point. So that's really all the form is, and everything else is at the statute.
So if someone doesn't give you the form and they make a request, you still...
I would still honor the request, absolutely.
Would you, as a matter of record keeping, keep a note of what the record was that was requested? Not necessarily who?
Right, yes, I would keep, I would make a note of it. And I actually have a binder that all of those go in.
And is that binder viewable upon request for people?
Yeah, it's a public record. Things might get redacted if it had birthdays or something, and that is unlikely.
Any further discussion?
What?
Just for clarity, a simple, I'd like to see this record for a simple matter of viewing, is still going to be. Here it is, because that is what another section of the statute requires.
Yeah, someone walked in and wanted a property copy, or would print out the property copy.
Or see some data, that's where we're available.
And pretty much what it says in here, much just so you know, is available during all town hours. I make a motion that we accept the Town of West Bath policy governing assets to public records under the main Freedom of Access Act.
Second, any further discussion?
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And then our second, which is no longer the second, addressing the Select Board's action on draft procedures. We had this presented at the last meeting, and we have a chance to look at it, make suggestions, questions, comments. Do we necessarily have to adopt this tonight if you want for a good discussion?
This kind, to me, looks like kind of what some of the other towns and cities are using. And I think it eliminates some of that what can look like embarrassment or or taking up all the time. I think it's important that every public select would, when we have these meetings, be allowed to speak and not be governed by one or two individuals, and that's just my feeling.
I don't know if I want to limit it twice, though. I mean, you've got, people have, and there's not other people speaking and they've got...
Actually, that's what the other towns do.
Did you?
Yeah.
Twice per agenda, I don't know.
Yeah.
Right.
Per agenda, not only, yeah. It may also have a tendency to make the meetings actually more effective as well. So that was the motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the Town of West Bath procedures for addressing the Select Board.
And I will second that. Any further discussion? Ready to vote?
I just want to say one thing. The city of Bath reads these every time before a meeting, if the previous meeting has been chaotic, to remind people of the format, and it seems to work well for them.
Not that we need to take the city of Bath as a model, but we might give it a whirl.
If nothing says that this does not work, we can't change it.
Right. Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor, as of this policy procedure as presented? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, next on the list, the warrant. We have to have an election for the primary. We are required by law to do this. So, you have in front of you a copy of the warrant for the presidential primary election and referendum, and we must vote to allow people to vote. So I move that we accept the warrant as proposed. Second, any discussion? All in favor? That's good. Alright, business item 4.
So I have a...
I'm what done that? Hold on just a minute. I forgot, we had to sign.
I am traveling May 19 through May 23rd, I guess, 22nd. To the 22nd for work.
Could you make it on the 23rd?
Yeah.
Or is that too problematic?
No, I can help, I see.
I know last year you
I unfortunately...
It was the same situation.
I'll tell you when my flight's been.
Why'd you get it before the...
Oh, no, I, yeah, I'm just...
Because early May is too early and...
No, this is, that's, if you can do it on, I can do the 20... No, I'm sorry, I return on the 23rd at 10:30, yeah.
16 too early?
I can do the week before.
We could probably make it for the 16th. I mean, it wouldn't... Emily said that she would work with whatever we needed to do, so...
I can do the 16th.
I floated the 21st for Emily, and she said that would be fine. I think the 16th could work. But that would be, it would be on a Tuesday, it would be a Thursday.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yes, I'm there.
Yes.
Okay, so could we have a motion to set the annual budget town meeting for Thursday, May 16th? At 6 o'clock?
Is that West Bath School?
Yes.
I move that we set the town meeting for Tuesday...
Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday, May 16th, at 6:00 p.m. at the West Bath School at 126 U. Middle Road.
On second pick? Any further discussion? All in favor? Alright. Next on the agenda is committee appointments. And for information, we have this note from the town administrator that we have applications for the Board of Assessment Review, the Budget Advisory Committee, and the Planning Board. And the note that an engineering design work for the underscoring Kennebec, to Kennebec Trail is on the M.D.O. work plan for 2024. And it would be helpful to have members of each of our community appointed to a committee to assist with local outreach. And there have been residents who were at the Select Board meeting when that was presented and had expressed an interest in being part of a local committee. And MCAG wants to, intends to assist the town in joining the community resiliency partnership to address vulnerabilities associated with climate change. And grants are available to member communities to help with the cost of projects that address climate resiliency. And memberships require that a town committee be appointed to assist with public outreach.
Both of these committees, and it's not anything you need to act on tonight. They can be very small. I mean, three people would be sufficient, particularly for the CRP committee. Some of the towns locally, if they had an energy committee that was already formed, they would just extend the duties of the energy committee to the climate resiliency committee. So that could be an option if those members were interested in taking on climate resiliency.
Is our energy committee still in place?
It's, technically, it's still in place because you haven't dissolved it. So that's an option. Other community issues, members from the Comprehensive Plan Committee, or they form another...
Right, could it be another ad hoc?
Yeah, so just some ideas.
This would have to be standard committees, they'd be more like...
Task forces.
Task forces or ad hoc committees. So what we have, we have applications from Mr. Ronald Proctor to be on the Board of Assessment Review. I'm not good at Italian.
Giovinazzi.
Mr. Giovinazzi.
What's his first name?
Andrew Giovinazzi would like to be on the Budget Committee. And Sandra Vasco would like to join the Planning Board. And all of those have, oh, I'm gonna say this last one. This is also interesting.
Amir Famil Mohamadi.
Amir Famil Mohamadi, Mohamadi, okay.
His email is Famil, so you may want to just do that.
Yeah.
Okay, and he is offering himself as a candidate for the Planning Board.
So, do we, was there one that was out of town? Is that one of these, or is that a different one?
Ronald Proctor, that was the first one. Yeah, he is out of town part of the year. November through May, generally.
Does our does our remote policy allow for such things, or?
Not yet, we would probably have to amend that.
We could amend it? Would it involve upgrading our potential equipment to allow for...
I think that we probably have all of the equipment that we need on hand. It's just a matter of getting it set up properly and making sure that it works.
Right, we would need it set up here, probably, rather than at the Fire Hall. Okay, which one of you guys raised your hands first?
Just a question, a question on the Budget Committee, and we've already had seven members now.
So, and we don't have a published capacity on it?
Do you want to need a number on a committee?
Not everyone came every time to the meetings.
I think the Budget Committee very well attended.
I don't think we should chew anyone away who wants to participate.
I think we have to be careful once we get 15 people at a time. So I think we may want to not to make it somewhat talk about what the capacity should be.
Right now, that's the one that doesn't have a published capacity, so it'd be...
Oh, really?
It's by...
So I don't think we could, we need that today when it's not published.
I should also mention that if you're going to appoint any new members to any of our committees, they need to review the committee policy first and sign off on the program conduct. So, do you want to have potential candidates do that before you consider an appointment? That might make sense.
And none of these are on more than two, correct? These aren't making it more than two, so what is Sandra's? She's on top, and she had it on one.
Sandra was, is only on the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
She wasn't on the...
Broadband Task Force is as well.
As a piece of it all?
You mentioned some name that was not resident in some November or something. That sounds like a seasonal resident. And as I understood it, seasonal residents don't have voting privileges in West Bath government.
You're saying West Bath is now my primary residence?
Right. If he votes here legally...
He just leaves part of the year.
Okay.
This is his legal voting position.
Okay, I just want some clarification.
Presumably, he pays taxes and stays...
He spends when his... I'll check that in another state.
Right.
If he's away, all the way from November to May, that's seven months, which is not impressive.
You're fine. But he's coming to primary.
Right, it's always...
You better explain to him that he's not...
Well, that's something that we can clarify.
Well, if he doesn't come back, I mean, it's, yes, yep.
Hillary Bush was resident, taxes for four years, and I don't refuse a property there. Residence is very poorly defined.
Melon?
Yes, Melon.
I just want to comment on the Budget Committee. David has a ton of experience with Budget Committee. I need to point out, we don't want a even number of people because there is a chance that anyone will come. And it'll be a big problem. I think we should defer to his comments.
The current is the only budget, the only committee that does not have a limitation set, so I don't think we can turn around and put that in place today, whether it's not being speculated. being stipulated.
I think, I'm just hearing comment, I think we should.
Well, if I kind of go by rules, we should go by all rules. And on here, it says, after submitting the application, you will have an interview with the Select Board.
So, um, on Thursday, March seventh, we should do the few these people. Maybe the, um, won't be here on March seventh.
Yeah, if you really want to.
Okay. If you're following me. And perhaps, I'm just saying, if we put these things in writing and then we don't do them, we pick and choose what we want to follow, what we don't. So if we have, if we have, we have now reviewed them, um, and then it says you may be scheduled for an interview, so we can, we can work with that. And then perhaps when we invite these folks for an interview, we could, um, ask them to read the policy, their committee's remit, and, um, the committee policy, the Code of Ethics, as part of their preparation for that.
Sounds like a good one.
Give us an opportunity to review those as well.
So I think we should change it to you will be scheduled for an interview. That's good.
If you put May here, you can't interview someone without any of your.
But we're saying, but it doesn't say that you're required, this doesn't say, you will be scheduled with an interview with the Select Board.
Right, but it leaves it open to our interpretation, which isn't good. May, yeah.
And it's just intended not to buy the board, so you can.
But it would be good, too, to talk to this guy, you know, how do we know, maybe he is not from November to May.
Yeah.
We don't know that, we appoint him, then we find out he's not here, seven months out of the year, right?
Uh, do you think you can do this with the Select Board in public meetings?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I am glad to see four applications here.
Yes, when you've got someone who wants to be on the Planning Board, has policy expert on regulatory statutes ordinance, and somewhere before you run, what a great time to have someone like that join our planning board. So I guess what are we doing with these?
We're saying thank you, and asking, they moved to the fourteenth. They said that they're all maybe, uh, requesting Christine to invite these folks to.
I know, here on the fourteenth, there, that was our normal week.
Oh, I'm sorry, the twenty-first.
Okay.
I didn't skip the week.
Should we just send them the, uh, the Code of Ethics and stuff for you to interview?
We can do that.
And when we, what was the date we were interviewing?
The twenty-first of March.
So by common agreement, that is the plan. Town administrators report.
Okay, you'll see under your correspondence, um, communication from Sally, that she is relocating to Colorado, and that the law firm will no longer be able to provide service to the town of West Bath. So we should be considering another town attorney to represent us. Sally indicated that she would help us with that process. And if you have any ideas about how you would like to move forward with selecting another firm, let me know, we can move forward with that. We do need a fair amount of support. So I would recommend going with one of the larger firms, or more than one firm, because we have a varied amount.
Think about it.
Yeah, think about it. But we have a varied plate of things that, um, the town deals with that we'll need support with.
I was involved when Jensen Baird was hired. What's been the, what's the usual procedure for a town to find a town attorney? I see the ads from all the big firms in, in the, yeah, in the A book, but.
Some towns don't select an attorney at all.
Ouch.
Other towns pay a retainer to keep an attorney available, and there are still other towns use more than one firm. Like, they might use one firm for land use issues, and another firm for contracts, personnel issues, that kind of thing.
Well, it's something also local, I mean, you're from a land use, I think you want someone who really understands the community.
Yeah.
I think that's important, but let's think about it.
But Mike, note, the biggest requirement is that they not also represent the city of Bath.
And I'm actually kind of thinking that we might want to talk to Fringularity, but they're a large firm similar to Jensen Baird.
Yeah.
The school uses Draven Wilson, I think. The county uses Bernstein Scharr. We should probably try to use somebody that.
That doesn't have.
Won't comply.
Right. But also, if we're going to split into two, at two different firms also, which kind of makes sense, too.
Yeah. Yeah, somebody who's really focused on land use. I think that makes a lot of sense, to separate it.
Okay.
So I included a letter that I wrote supporting MCAG's application for a service provider grant for the Community Resilience Partnership. So that's just in there for your information. Since they will be supporting us with joining the partnership. And there's also correspondence from Saginaw County EMA about an upcoming training for senior officials for the National Incident Management System. It is technically required of all municipal officers. There's an upcoming training on the twenty-eighth from five to seven, if any of you are available and interested. I'd be happy to sign me up.
Yeah, sign me up. I, I did last year's, and it was actually quite enlightening.
It helps if we're applying for FEMA grants.
I can.
FEMA actually requires that municipal officers be certified.
I can do it as well.
And that's all I had, yeah. All right. Meeting as the Board of Assessors. Discussion regarding February eighth, meeting and determining next steps. You have information for us?
Really no other information than what Steve provided when he was here.
Were you able to be in touch with Jessica?
I attempted to get in touch with Jessica, and we did communicate with her by text. She is at home, sick with her family right now, so I wasn't able to coordinate a time. But I will work on that next week, when she's feeling better, hopefully.
Seems to me that having that conversation with her would be kind of like the first next step, because we really can't do anything until the applications have been reviewed.
Correct.
So I don't know if, um.
Well, you could technically, but it probably wouldn't be advisable.
I, I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't want to do that without professional consultation.
And have you submitted all of the applications to them?
No, she didn't want to receive anything.
While she's sick.
While she's sick, so I didn't send them anything.
That makes sense, because we are two weeks out from our deadline.
It's really not our deadline, it's the deadline for the applicants to file an abatement.
Our deadline, according to Steve, is commitment next year.
Well, sixty days from when they file the abatement is our deadline.
Unless we have.
Unless there's an extension.
Extension, and we have extensions for all of the remaining questions, right? Everybody except the one.
Not everybody, because, you know, there are some people who just filed.
Oh, okay.
So we haven't requested extensions from everybody else.
Okay. Can we do that? Or should we do that, I'm just wondering?
Uh, yes, I would plan to do that, if you're not able to review them right away.
Okay. Let's just, let's just do that to be sure. And then, then we can deal with. Any other discussion? I have in Select Board comments, I guess, I have something.
On this topic, can I ask a question?
Of course you may.
Since we had the meeting with Steve and Jessica and Representative Parker, what is the tally of things that we have received from Parker about the revaluation? My understanding is that we have received three. The one with all the schedules in it, two, which they have recently provided of a sort of pricing manual description, and three, a spreadsheet. Has there been anything else submitted?
No, that is the extent of what we have. And when Jessica and I met with Steve Sullivan here at the office, we looked at the server to make sure that that was all that we had, and that is the extent of what we have.
Mike?
Kind of along with Kathy's line, where do we go from here? I'm not real clear on, and Christine asked a question several months ago, what are we doing with the 2024 taxes? Are you downloading deeds, matching them up?
No, we have received, I've been asking for direction from the assessors, and we have not been authorized to do anything, so I have not done anything yet.
And I'm trying to clarify that a little bit. That's all off trio, that's not trio where. Traditionally, traditionally, the staff has done the downloads and the matchups. I'm not sure where you do your cuts between assessing agent and staff function, strictly staff function, because you're getting in a whole, you know.
Right.
Where, where do you need for the deeds? Hold on, what, Christine answered it.
We're certainly capable of doing all of that, and I'm happy to do it, I know how to do it. And we already have passwords and everything to get into where we need to be to get that information. Since we've been under so much scrutiny recently, we have done nothing. We are waiting for some direction from the Board of Assessors, so that, you know, when, when we act and try to do something to move the process forward, that we're not proven for. And this is a real concern.
So I guess, would you let Christine do this?
That's okay. Go ahead.
I'm trying to understand, I guess, because the deeds aren't part of the valuation process, and entering the deeds is my understanding, it's not really tied to that abatement, you're, you're quantifying what's been sold and matching that, that really, I don't understand what authorization you need for that.
Well, this is the first I've heard that it would be okay for staff to handle that process. I have never heard one word that we were authorized to do anything to do with the assessing process. I mean, is that your understanding? That's what I heard.
I, I don't think that's my understanding.
I understand the reluctance to assume that under these circumstances.
I abstracted titles for twelve years, I can certainly do a Rita deed and a process to transfers.
I'm just trying to get where we're at, I'm not.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, because I want to know where we're at, too.
I understand.
My struggling concern is, every time we come to one of these meetings, Christine, you say this, you're not getting permission from the Board of Assessors. I don't feel like I'm getting the true information of what you need from us at these meetings, because last meeting, we gave you the permission to go ahead with the abatements, and at that time, I didn't hear anything else that was needed, and that's what's frustrating to me.
And I actually wrote a statement for tonight, so that I, so that it could be clear. Our meetings have been quite chaotic recently. And it's been difficult.
But I get tired of you, what it feels like throwing us under the bus, when I don't know what you need.
Okay, let me tell you what I mean. If anybody has any other comments first, that would be fine.
Tell us what you need.
Okay, I will read my statement. Two Board of Assessors. After six months of meetings which have been dominated by criticism and confusion, there has been no progress in developing our assessment procedures following the town-wide evaluation. Our taxpayers deserve responsive and consistent service. Town office staff deserve trust from the elected officials and the opportunity to learn new skills that will improve our ability to serve our taxpayers. We are six short months away from tax commitment. Who will be held accountable when we aren't ready? Applications for abatement, de-transfers need to be processed, errors corrected, loss splits, mergers, changes in value, and exemptions need to be reviewed as close to April first as possible. The tax maps need to be updated, incorporating corrections and practical changes. It seems reasonable that the town administrator will have the responsibility of ensuring that the requisite work is completed on schedule. If I am to be held accountable, it makes sense that I would have an influence on the development and implementation of our assessment procedures. Board is very limited perspective on the ability of small communities to operate efficiently and effectively without an assessing agent. Nothing in state law prohibits this. Regardless, there is no requirement that an assessing agent be a certified main assessor. West Bath has Board of Assessors. Routine clerical activities will be delegated to and completed by staff under the direction of the Board of Assessors. Parker Appraisal would complete the work involving evaluation of property, including but not limited to loss splits, improvements, and current use programs, still under the direction of the Board of Assessors. When West Bath had an employed assessing agent, the Board was still obligated to provide oversight. The assessing agent worked under the direction of the town administrator, and other members of the staff provided regular support to the assessing agent to fulfill the responsibilities of the position provided for in state law. Regular reporting to the Board of Assessors was not provided at the time, however, it would be incorporated into our procedures moving forward. It was suggested by a member of the public that we grow our own assessing agent. Is there a difference between training someone new to act in that capacity, or having an interested member of the staff, or more than one member of the staff, improve their knowledge and skills in that capacity? Statements have been made in public meetings about my integrity and confidence, and the confidence of the town office staff. Statements have also been made questioning the integrity and credentials of Parker Appraisal staff in public meetings. With all meeting content public, and the word litigation being mentioned more than once, it's no wonder that Parker Appraisal has stepped back. The relationship between Parker Appraisal and the town administration, it does not need to be this way. A culture of disempowerment has developed, and we aren't sure how the Board of Assessors would like to proceed with routine tasks that could easily be completed as part of our. that could easily be completed as part of our normal daily operations. Parker appraisal will work in partnership with me and the rest of the staff to move the process forward. All members of the staff have an opportunity to improve our skill and provide better customer service. We're the ones who are available throughout the week to answer questions and provide support for taxpayers. And the taxpayers expect us to be able to provide answers without having to wait for the next public meeting. Trust the people who hired to do the work. Amazing things happen when people are empowered to learn and grow in their positions. Each of us already has a solid base on which to build our skills. I respectfully ask that the Board of Assessors take action to assign and develop assessment procedures to the town administrator with authority to put those procedures into practice. This is in line with the duties of the town administrator outlined in the job description for the position. Regular reports to Board of Assessors will be provided. Also acknowledging that adjustments to processes are sometimes necessary. I would appreciate a reasonable amount of time to develop and implement a system that is effective and sustainable for the long term.
Do you have any response from the board?
I actually do have a, I don't, I, this kind of pertains to this. And it's not going to feel good when I say it, so I'm going to say it anyway. I appreciate your response, Christine. However, I, I have lost some confidence in you. I'll just relapse on that with this. And with the letter I received from Sally Daggett about our contract, which I'm going to read into the record because you guys were not given this information, that Christine submitted the contract to our town attorney. The town attorney responded to her saying, "Hi Christine, I took the Parker appraisal contract you sent, converted it into Word and added some language in section three, one, four, five, six, and seven, plus add a new section eight, nine, 10, 11", which are provisions that every contract should have. It is not the best drafted contract, but with my additions, it ought to work. I'm trying to balance protecting the town against a contractor walking away. Note the items that I highlighted in sections. Section two, three is, the town really going to take on the data entry into Trio? That needs to be clarified. You have to read the whole contract carefully and make sure you're comfortable with doing this. So Sally added sections, our town attorney added sections to this contract. And it had two pages of opportunities to protect the town for litigation. Let me give you specifics, dispute resolution and whatnot. And this was received on May 17th. Ironically, this is not the contract that was presented to us to sign by the select board. And I, for the life of me, Christine, I can't understand why you wouldn't take our recommended contract from the attorney and process that and give us a contract for the board to sign that had no protection for the town. And here we are in this difficult situation. And I, I, I don't understand. We paid five hundred, or $951 in May of '21 towards legal fees, and yet we chose to disregard our attorney's recommendation.
May I respond?
Yes, please.
I think it's lacking context. You're assuming that I did not bring it to the attention of the board. I would not have contacted Sally and not brought something to the attention of the board. At the time, the focus of the board and of the town office staff, with Julie and Ron's prodding that we needed to get away from vision and move to Trio, was that what we needed to do was have a revaluation in order to do that, especially since we hadn't had a revaluation since 2007. So it would have been about fifteen years between round revaluations. There were numerous conversations about this. At the time, Don, everything wasn't right because it was still okay to make phone calls and talk to people. The environment today isn't as safe as it was then. I absolutely would have brought it to the attention of the board, but the board's focus, again, was on getting a revaluation done and, you know, honoring the staff's request to move from vision to Trio. And that's what we did.
But that doesn't mean we got contracts.
When I talked to Bob Gengrest, he said, "I'm sorry, this is the proposal that I gave to all the towns." When Mark Bauer was at the public workshop a few weeks ago, he said, "This looks like their normal proposal." Sally's sense of urgency wasn't so much that she said, you know, "They cannot sign this proposal." She just said, "We added a little bit of extra language, contractual language." Fine. We did have conversations about it. And we talked about the why of having a revaluation. And since nobody else bid on the project, and I've had a long track record with Parker appraisal, and I know their work, the board decided to go with my recommendation and approve the proposal. So your distorted perception of me is your responsibility. I absolutely know that I brought it to the board. Not at that meeting, but it was talked about.
The contract that you presented to the board to sign was not the contract that we paid for from our town attorney? But why would we not use the town attorney's contract?
We didn't use the town attorney's contract for the reason that I just told you, because it wasn't acceptable to vendor. This is what I'm talking about, Kathy. It's not a safety butter for the staff that we want. The staff is overly scrutinized.
I've got to be honest with you, Christine. I, I have some concerns. One of the things I'm concerned about tonight is we listened to Steve say that he wouldn't recommend your town staff putting all this information into.
Yes, he wouldn't recommend.
So that's concerning to me. I'm, I'm really feeling like.
There's nothing in the law that prohibits.
Well, I know, but when you have professional people saying to us they wouldn't recommend, that's concerning to me.
Then how do we get market?
Well, I'm really struggling and feeling like we need to hire assessors.
What if we can't find anyone?
Have we tried?
I, I tried to compel the board through my statement about the timing of all this. What happens when we get to commitment and nothing is done?
Can, can we?
You need to trust your staff.
What, I think what, what Steve was talking about was having, was not having the staff handle the things that would change valuation. My understanding of the deeds and all that kind of stuff is that that does not change valuation.
Correct.
Parker is still under contract with us till commitment next year, right?
And I understand that, but everything you've asked for, she's saying she doesn't get what she needs. I'm not getting what I need.
Nor am I.
Well, then let's fix this. The way to fix this is with the staff.
A way to fix this is to have Parker appraisal meet with us.
You're that puts us in a position where you're asking something that we don't have any control over.
I, I, that.
We have control over what we do in this office.
Right, we're already in a hole, right?
Exactly, I'm going to dig us out of that hole.
And we're not feeling, I'm not feeling, I'm feeling, I want to get further in, and I'm feeling like that could be the case.
It will not be the case if you allow the staff to do what you hired us to do.
Well, we hired you to do contracts, Christine. I, I, I'm concerned that we paid $951 and chose not to take our attorney's recommendation, and we didn't know about that.
Could you keep your voice at a civilized level? It hurts my ears when you talk about that.
So, and also, just to talk about Kathy's comment. So I actually reached out to Steve to get clarification on his comment about our staff. I said, "Hi Steve, thank you again for attending our meeting and a visit to the town office. I want to ask a question about the edits to property cards. You strongly suggested that all edits that were made to the cards by an assessor or under the guidance of elected assessors. Several edits were made during the revaluation process. I believe most of these are done by the town clerk and town administrator based on their recording of the property cards and field cards. I believe the edits that were done by Parker appraisal for taxpayer meetings were done by Parker appraisal. Is this an area that we should have had an assessor supervision with town employees?" His response was, "I would assume that these edits would have been done under the supervision of Parker appraisal, all edits."
The edits were done under the supervision of Parker appraisal.
Yeah, absolutely. We haven't done any edits since Parker appraisal did the revaluation.
Did the town staff, did the town staff make edits, take the field cards and edit the property cards?
Yes, based on Parker appraisal's information.
But were they here?
Yes, they weren't here during that time. They were doing the revaluation.
Can you interrupt her while she's giving an answer to your question?
This is, this is part of the issue, is the disinformation that's getting out into the community that some people actually ignore here. We know what's happening in the town office. And I have every confidence that if you allow your town office staff to work with Parker appraisal and we make, we report regularly to the board, that is what's going to get us out of this hole.
And I'm afraid when something goes wrong, you're going to say, "My Board of Assessors didn't let me."
Absolutely.
Well, I will continue to say that I'm disempowered if, if we don't get the go-ahead to do some of this work.
We, we don't know.
We're going to come up with commitment. Nothing's going to be ready.
Would you please?
When she pauses, Natalie, I think she's dying.
When she takes a breath, she is not necessarily finished.
Why don't we all take a breath and let this gentleman up here say?
There are things that, that should be, that need to be executed, essentially. We are not complaining about the performance of the town staff. I have stated very clearly, I don't think, number one, you should allow assessors' agents to function as a consultant. I have stated very clearly that I don't think you have the tools to do a proper job. I will repeat one question that was asked in August. Is the red book a proper assessment manual?
Well, no, but they, they're updating it.
They haven't done it yet.
No, but as I said, Jessica's sick, and I'll talk to Jessica when she's done.
Yes. You have a staff hired under duress, which, had you spoken to COVID duress? Lack of, lack of staff. It was a common problem all over the state. And.
COVID.
COVID and the complications of what happened with, with the market because of COVID, with people moving in from everywhere, paying for any price for anything. We had this discussion in Woolwich, and we told them, "Don't do it now. There isn't anybody to do it right." So you made the decision to sign a contract with a, that wasn't going to take place for a year. Okay. That's passed. This July, we started saying, "This product is not going to work." It was said by CUNAs, it was said by the public. I don't have the answer that I asked for in the meeting. I'm not criticizing town staff. I'm criticizing the product that you have, the product you are being asked to use. You cannot carry off the conversation that is necessary for the board or an agent with what you have. Not criticism of town staff. Fact, you don't have the tools you need to do a full, thorough, and justifiable job. That's not a criticism of staff. I will criticize the concept that you can go back to the poison well and get a good answer.
Well, I, I think that we need, we need to work with Parker until we can.
You have made the decision. And where is Steve Winter's update on researching others' agents? You are going to Parker appraisal and not following what was said in first of January.
I'm not following this.
We made a commitment to have, to have an assessor. I believe even David Hennessy brought that up to hire one at the meeting.
You're the assessors, and I would appreciate the proper board is being used. You are assessors. Ron was an assessing agent.
And we.
And Parker appraisal is not the assessor or the assessing agent. They're the revaluation firm. So let's not confuse the issue more by using the wrong language.
Excuse me, I'm not at all confused by the terms.
And you're just, hold on, I would like to just say, what we have is what we have. It seems to me that one of the ways that's available to us is, what we asked a week or so ago was for Christine to be in touch with Parker. One of the things we asked of Parker was if they could, if Jessica particularly, could work with us. And if, if possible, could she meet with people who had questions? We don't have that answer because she was ill. I would like to see us authorize Christine to pursue the questions about availability and to authorize the town to continue to work with Parker to get the questions clarified. In the meantime, can we do further research about who, what, what the qualifications, what the, what the payment, all those questions about another kind of assessing agent for the town? What kind of contract would be appropriate, et cetera? We can't just do that overnight. But in the meantime, between now and commitment, we've got a lot of work to do. Between now and April 1st, there's a lot of work to do. And if we don't set people free to consult with Parker about what needs to be done and what they need to do for us, then there is.
Why can't we be part of that process?
We should be part of the process.
Because it has to be done in public, and you generally only meet a couple of times a month.
I'm agreed to come in as needed to, to meet the demands of the community.
Except if you're out of town.
The public process is a difficult process because the board is somewhat limited in what you can do without being in a public, publicly noticed meeting. You hire your staff and a town administrator for a reason. And we can definitely
Hold on, I.
process the work that we're able to process that doesn't involve value and report to you. Like, for example, what we would do, and this is also something that technically Ron should have been doing because he was not an assessor. He was reporting to the Board of Assessors. When we're looking at exemptions for April 1st, we would produce a list of new homestead exemptions and present it to you for review. That's what review means. The Board of Assessors doesn't sit here at this table and process deeds or review homestead exemptions. That's clerical work that can be done in the office. We could come up with reports that we can produce for the board that you can review at public meetings. So that we could submit these items or do whatever we need to do to make sure that the annual work is done so that when we get to commitment, we can actually collect taxes.
So this is the first time I've heard you ask, tell us exactly what you need.
Yeah, and you're right. You're absolutely right. And it's been difficult for me with the tone of the meetings to actually get the words out or remember what I wanted to say.
But as a town administrator, this is what we need.
Yes.
Because we can't authorize when we don't understand what your staff can do and can't do. So homestead act, what was the other thing?
Well, we would be.
Well, I got to process the work that doesn't affect value.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, so, so we would do what Mike was saying earlier. We would, we would process the deeds. We would download the deeds and transfer tax forms, process them. We can still provide paperwork to the Board so that you can review it. Any lot splits would go into a separate pile so that whoever is actually doing the valuation, whether it's Parker Appraisal or another party, they would handle that. But it would be essentially like what I'm doing now with the abatements is just organizing them so that it's ready for somebody else to review. So homestead exemptions, veterans exemptions, filling out reports that we need to send to Main Revenue Services by the MVR, and the sales ratio report. Clerical staff can fill the information out, provide it to the Board, and the Board can review it and say, "Yes, go ahead and send this in." So I think the checks and balances would actually be more than what we've had. The only time that the Board had seen Ron was when there were abatements or supplementals.
Right.
But he never viewed any of his other work. And technically, even though he's a CMA, you still have an obligation to do that.
Right.
So what I'm suggesting is that we come up with a process. And I would certainly, whatever process I come up with that I think is appropriate, I would share with the Board so that you can look at it and say, "Yes, this makes sense. Go ahead and do it."
Well, everything you just said finally made sense to me.
It's hard for me to communicate. I, I respect what you're saying because it's hard for me to communicate. I need time to think. And with the chaotic meetings that we've had recently, it's been very difficult, which is why I put it in writing tonight.
Steve, do you want a motion?
I do want a motion.
And if the motion isn't everything that you need, we need to hear that because, again, we make these motions. And if in your head, we're leaving something out that's very important, that's not going to allow you to meet the needs that we have, then there's no sense doing this, so.
I appreciate that. And that will, I trust that that will reveal itself in the process of putting together the procedures.
So is what you're asking for is permission to put together the procedures or to actually start all this? What are you asking for?
I think at this point, it would be reasonable to expect that I could put together the procedures for Board review. I think that would make it more comfortable for the Board if you could at least review the procedures before we put them into action. But what I really want is for the staff to be allowed to put whatever acceptable procedures that we come up with to be able to just move forward with it. Because we've got a lot of work pending that we owe the state and that we owe the taxpayers. And this is aside from abatements. This is just leaving the abatements completely out of the works. We have other work that we need to do, and we're capable of doing it.
What, what did we, outside of the, the abatement process, what work have we included in the process?
What hasn't been done is certain reporting to the state that Ron or Julie took care of while Ron was here. So the sales analysis that we submit to the state, the tree growth roster, deed transfers...